We're going to go ahead and get started with the welcome to the July City Council Meeting. I will be running the meeting tonight. The mayor is not available. So let me remind you to please mute your cellphones and rise for the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so everyone has a consent agenda. May I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? So moved. Go ahead.
Second.
We will do public comment or if any council members have comments?
I just wanted to highlight a couple of things for folks who feel like we often don't make progress on things. There's lots of things on this consent agenda that are about progress. There's the Bond project of the Richmond Hill bathrooms and picnic shelter. There's a sidewalk project on Wood Avenue sidewalks on Long Shoals. There's, oh, finally, starting reconstruction of the art station, passenger waiting area, bathrooms, all of that. So we're approving contracts for all of that work to be done, and all of that is really good. So just wanted to point out that things do get done.
And I missed the proclamation, so we'll go ahead and get the vote, and then we'll go back to the proclamation. I apologize. So, public comment on the consent agenda? Okay. If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now we have proclamation. I apologize. So I've got Jan Shepherd. And anyone else?
Whereas families are a priority in the city of Asheville and Buncombe County, and part of helping them thrive is ensuring they receive community support to develop and sustain healthy lifestyles. And whereas, according to the American Academy of Pediatrics, Academy of Nutrition and Dietetics, American College of Obstetrics and Gynecology, American Academy of Family Physicians, and other leading health organizations, breastfeeding is the optimal food for infants. Whereas, a mother's decision to breastfeed her baby should be supported by her family and community. And whereas breastfeeding is associated with lower rates of childhood illness such as obesity, diabetes, and infectious diseases, as well as less maternal breast and ovarian cancers and diabetes, and a faster recovery from childbirth as compared to formula feeding. And whereas breastfeeding promotes maternal-infant bonding and benefits the entire family, as it's associated with lifelong health and development. And whereas collaborating with healthcare providers and community resources can positively impact breastfeeding success. And whereas our community is proud to have Mission Hospital with a baby-friendly hospital initiative designation. And whereas, in his proclamation supporting the 2018 World Breastfeeding Week, the governor of the state of North Carolina has recognized that in a world filled with inequality, crises, and poverty, breastfeeding is the foundation of lifelong good health for babies and mothers. And whereas recognizing the persistent inequities in our community's birth outcomes, where African-American babies in Buncombe County are nearly four times as likely to die in the first year of life as white babies, a breastfeeding-friendly community could be an anecdote to tragedy and a strategy toward advancing equitable birth outcomes in the city of Asheville and Buncombe County. Now therefore, Esther E. Mannheimer, the mayor of the city of Asheville, does hereby proclaim Asheville as a breastfeeding-family-friendly community and encourages families of all races and ethnicities to continue breastfeeding by providing a supportive and welcoming environment. Thank you.
So thank you very much. I would like to thank the city council for supporting this community-wide effort to normalize breastfeeding for all. Recede of this designation will be a remarkable achievement for our community, and it supports improved health outcomes for all people in Buncombe County. We know our community is well-positioned for this designation with many positive and encouraging practices already in motion. We will keep you updated by sharing information and milestones as we go along. So thank you very much.
Shannon, aye? Let me get this queued up. Great. Thank you. Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of council, members of the public. This next item on your agenda is a conditional zoning request for the property located at 2360 Sweeten Creek Road. The subject property actually has the address of One Wesley Drive, and you can see the property is surrounded by, or it's actually kind of nestled in the loop or the bend of Wesley Drive. 2360 is the address for the larger Givens Estate, and this is part of the Givens Estate property. It is a over-200-acre campus, and this particular parcel is 4.3 acres and kind of nestled in the center of the campus. The request is to rezone the property from RM16, and you can see from the Exhibit A map, the demarcation line between RS2 and RM16. The Givens Estate, being as large as it is, actually supports a number of different zoning designations. The request is to rezone from RM16 to residential expansion conditional zone. And as you can see from the Exhibit B aerial map, the property is already developed, and it's, again, located in the middle of the larger Givens Estate community, and you can see some of that surrounding residential development. That's part of the larger community. The request is triggered by the proposed demolition of the 11 existing buildings to be replaced with two new modern residential buildings. The new buildings will house a total of 80 units, which is actually a net reduction from the existing 86 units. However, because this is a demolition with brand-new construction, we look at it as a brand-new project, and it meets the Level 3 threshold, which in turn triggers the conditional zoning. In addition to the two new buildings, there are a number of other site improvements associated with the project, including the reconstruction of the parking area for a total of 98 parking spaces, landscaping, ample open space, and a number of sidewalks and other pedestrian connections. At this time, I'd like to hand out to the council members, this is a revised list of B1 conditions in preparation for the meeting this evening. The project engineer contacted our staff inquiring about the greenway that is located along the creek. The proper, the greenway, the existing greenway and sidewalk is already located within the 30-foot aquatic buffer, and our ordinance does allow for the replacement of the existing feature. But we thought it was important to go ahead and note that in the B1 conditions, just so that it was very clear. The buildings will be residential in appearance with materials that are consistent with the rest of the development. Depending on your perspective, it could be three to four stories, as you can see from the proposed building elevations. And that concludes my introduction. I'd be happy to answer any questions, or the developer's representative may be here. Does the developer want to say anything?
Good evening. I'm John Cowan. I'm the executive director at Givens Estates. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. What an excellent review. I don't know that I have a whole lot that I can add. We are replacing 86 existing residences in 11 buildings within the two buildings on this site. And any questions that you might have for me or for Tom Jones? Maybe Tom would like to make some comments to further talk about the site development?
Not a question about site development, but are people, do you have residents in those buildings now?
No, there are not residents in those buildings currently.
Okay.
Not currently.
Okay. So not displacing anyone?
We're not displacing anyone. Any other questions?
The only, the question I have is, with the widening of Sweeten Creek, potentially?
Yes.
Does this have anything to do with, does it butt up against Sweeten Creek or anything like that? It's-
It's actually nestled within the center of campus, near to one of our central buildings, Asbury Commons. You know, we've looked at a number of issues. We're actually reducing the number of units from 86 to 80. So I'd like to introduce Tom Jones, who's our civil engineer, to give a little more in-depth detail about the site development.
My name is Tom Jones. I'm with WGLA Engineering. I also have Tyler Wagner from our office, and Ken Parton with Givens is also here. And I think Jan did a great job of the overview of the project. It is in the central part of the campus. As part of the Urals process, we had a neighborhood meeting. I just want to kind of touch on that, because I think it's important to know how the neighbors and how the community feels about the project. On the public meeting was, yeah, an informal public meeting was held on March the 11th and hosted by Givens, and all owners within 200 feet of the campus, anywhere on the campus within 200 feet were invited to attend, not just from within the little, the little piece that we're talking about here tonight, but any, any property area within 200 feet of Givens Estates property was invited to attend. And we had two neighbors show up and two residents of Givens, and that was it. I think it's safe to say that it's not a controversial project, and I think that speaks to where it's located, which is internal to the campus. It also speaks to the nature of Givens Estates and the good things that they do for seniors, and the quality of the product and projects that they've done in the past. So I just want to point out that it's not a controversial project, and I think there's good reasons behind that, and we're just proud to be a part of that project team. Like Ms. Tuck also, I think she outlined, or it's in your report, that this project also meets all the requirements of Urals, the CZ zoning, subject to the conditions that are presented there. And I think it is important to know, or to reemphasize, that it meets the council goal of responsible growth. It's in line with your comprehensive plan, and it's compatible with its founding land uses, which are also residential for Givens Estates. This is one of the elevation drawings of the type of buildings that are, they're going to go in. So basically, these buildings are replacing small units that are really smaller than people would want to rent now, but we're able to consolidate those into two, two buildings versus the 11. They'll be demolished. And so this is what they'll look like, multiple levels to kind of work with the topography to the greatest extent possible out there. Beyond that, I guess I'd just like to be available for questions related to the site or the project, and Givens is here as well.
Great.
I have another one.
Go ahead.
Since you're here, so I noticed on the drawings that there is a creek, actually two creeks that come together to, is, and it seems like maybe they're, they're underground right now. Maybe I'm wrong about that. It's hard to tell. Are there any plans to daylight any of that?
There's not a plan to open up. It is underground from the western or the left side of your page to kind of this green wooded area. We're not going to be able to daylight that as part of the project, but at the same time, we're not going to have to impact the stream and-
So there is part of it that's already daylighted in the-
Yes.
In the wooded section?
The green area in the middle of the page there is currently daylighted, and it'll stay that way.
Great. Okay. It's just hard to tell from the drawings we have.
Yes.
Okay. Great. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I will open it up to public comment. I'll go through our rules. So you have three minutes, unless you have three people who agree to give up their time for public comment, and if so, that is 10 minutes, and it's limited to what we're discussing right now. So it's public comment for this issue. So do I have any public comment? Come on up.
Do you need to officially open the hearing?
I did. Didn't I say I opened, I'm opening the public hearing. Okay.
Thank you.
State your name, please.
I'm Timothy Sadler, and just a quick question. I was wondering if there's public arts that are part of this, because it's a new development? Like, do you get, have to put in like 1% into like public art? What?
One of the many things we can't do.
Jeez. Okay. All right. Well, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any more public comment? Okay, with that, I will close the public comment period. Any other questions from council?
No, I'm happy to make a motion.
Okay.
All right. Yes. I move to recommend approval of the conditional zoning request for the Givens Estate Friendship Park located at 2360 Sweeten Creek Road from residential multifamily high-density district, RM16 to residential expansion district conditional zone for the demolition of 11 buildings, 86 housing units to be replaced with the construction of two buildings comprising 80 housing units, and find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, and is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan in that, one, the future land use category allows for multifamily structures, and is consistent with the proposed residential expansion zoning district, and, two, the project will improve the quality and safety of housing units within a senior living community.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. So the second public hearing, which is to consider the conditional zoning of One South Tunnel Road from Regional Business District to mixed-use expansion conditional zone to allow a mixed-use development that includes residential retail service and entertainment uses. The petitioner has asked that this public hearing be continued until August 27th. Do I open that up for public comment?
Do you need a motion for continuation?
Just a motion. Okay, so I, may I have a motion to-
I move to continue Public Hearings Item B to the August 27th council meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Can we get all the cellphones turned off? That's embarrassing that it takes a while. Just saying. Okay. All right, so moving on to new business. So I, the first, these are all three Housing Trust Fund, well, so Section A is all three Housing Trust Fund, and I'm going to ask Paul D'Angelo to come forward.
Good evening. Paul D'Angelo with the Community and Economic Development Department. Good evening, city council, city management. Thanks for having us here tonight to talk about three Housing Trust Fund applications that are before you tonight, with staff reports with additional detail. We put together a presentation to discuss three of these briefly, looking at the funding, funding sources, and the total number of affordable units we'll be getting, and looking for an adoption of resolutions to approve the Housing Trust Fund loan applications or loan modifications to help assist and complete these projects. So the three projects before you tonight are Short Michigan, which will be with Homeward Bound for permanent supportive housing. We're also looking at the Amherst Apartments, which is a tax credit development. And we are also talking tonight about Swananoa Bend, which is an affordable housing development with a local developer here in town. I'll start off with Short Michigan. So again, working here with Homeward Bound, whose mission is focused on housing our homeless population, particularly with permanent supportive housing and the Housing First model. With this funding, they're looking at adding five more units as well as rehabbing units they have for 11 rental units total for permanent supportive housing. These 11 units in total, when completed with the addition and the rehabilitation, will be eight one-bedroom units and three two-bedroom units. And these will all be rented to households under 30% of our area median income, particularly focused on individuals and families who are homeless or in danger of being homeless. And they are utilizing our continuum of care funding, which of course follows that Housing First model. Taking a look at some of the sources to put this project together for them, it's our City of Asheville Housing Trust Fund at $530,000, as well as funding from the Asheville Regional Housing Consortium, which is our home funding, as well as local bank and charitable trust funding for a total development cost of about $900,000. And the city's funding here is contingent on Homeward Bound receiving that additional $290,000 with their local bank or charitable trust funding. The second application before you is Amherst Apartments. This is a tax credit development.
I'm going to actually call and vote at the end of each one.
Oh, sure.
So if, we're going to break it up, and I'm going to ask for public comment at each one, if that's okay.
Absolutely. And I, so I can take questions about Short Michigan, and representatives from Homeward Bound are also here tonight as well.
Okay. So if anyone, does anyone from city council have a question for Paul or?
I do.
Okay.
So I know that there is a, there's a possibility that there might be more home funding for this project. I mean, there's a, there, anyway, there might be more of an opportunity, or an opportunity for that. Would that reduce the city's obligation then, or would it reduce the charitable trust funding?
Well, it could possibly, either one, I know that right now we're waiting on the tax credit applications for this year when it comes to that home funding.
Right.
And there also is somewhat of a deadline regarding purchasing this property, I think in October, and so that timeline could be very tight, especially knowing that some of our nonprofit agencies are going to be coming back for additional funding.
Right. Okay.
Does anyone from Homeward Bound want to make any comment? You don't have to, but you are welcome to.
Good evening to the council. I'm Meredith Schweitzer, the executive director at Homeward Bound, and what I do want to say is, we are very grateful and appreciative for this support and for the advocacy. I want to thank the council members who are on the HCD committee, council members Smith, Young, and Mayfield, thank you for your support. Thank you for allowing us to move into this. This is really going to be our first foray into affordable housing, and we are incredibly excited about the impact of that, and not only what it's going to mean for the folks who we are able to house at this property, at this site, but also what it's going to mean for the community moving forward with much bigger projects, with greater impact. So again, I wanted to extend a very heartfelt thank you on behalf of Homeward Bound.
Great. Thank you.
Brian Ventsman, one of the board members at Homeward Bound. Really, the big thing here is that this is a great example of where city money being first in really enables us to tackle one of the largest problems we have in our community, which is affordable housing for those at under 30% AMI. And I think it's an awesome use of our city resources and able to do this, and we will be back doing it and asking for similar things many more times over the next couple of years that we can build even more housing.
Great.
Be happy to take any questions.
It's not a question, just a comment in case it's not clear to people from the application. This is, this is perhaps the first example since I've been on council of, of an organization coming in and purchasing housing to keep it affordable. So we normally are funding new construction, and this is, this is trying to keep existing housing affordable over the long term, and this is going to be permanently affordable under your, under your care.
Yeah, I mean, the biggest difference between our project and many of the others that council addresses for the Housing Trust Fund is the term of affordability. We're, we're essentially making it indefinite. 99 years is our deed-restricted affordability term.
Yeah.
So we want to make it a permanent community asset.
Yeah. It's a great deal for us. Thank you all for taking that step.
Thank you. I don't have a question, just a comment. This came to HCD in June, and it's a very worthy project, and it's going to do a lot of good, and I appreciate your organization stepping out and taking the, making the opportunity for folks to have this in the future. So thank you, and I hope that you continue to do projects on this caliber, on this level. Thank you.
Thank you.
So now I'll open it up to public comment. Seeing none, I will close public comment, and unless there are other questions from city council, I'd take a motion.
I'm happy to make a motion that we approve the request by Homeward Bound to borrow funds from the Housing Trust Fund in the amount of $530,000.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. So Paul, the next one is resolution authorizing city manager to execute a Housing Trust Fund loan modification with Swananoa Bend LLC for the Simpson Street property.
Sure. So working with Kirk Booth, a local developer, for affordable housing on Swananoa Bend, where there's going to be 70 rental apartments, all one-bedrooms, and also utilizing the Housing Choice vouchers, which we know are always in search of a home here in the community. So Kirk being one of our local developers who does a great job of accepting vouchers, also here, it's one of the first forays into modular construction, so it's very important that part of our work, we're looking at affordable housing and cost, is design and construction innovations, and so it's very interesting to see this project move forward. And again, similar to other projects that are before you tonight with Housing Trust Funds, these will all be rented to households under 60% of the area median income. And as I mentioned with the vouchers, we're talking HUD vouchers, Housing Authority, Homeward Bound via Health, so very excited to support this. The original sources came in here with a traditional bank loan from Home Trust Bank, some funding from Buncombe County, as well as an original request, you might remember, of $300,000 and then an additional $350,000 for a total of $650,000 in Housing Trust Fund loans originally. Kirk has come back asking for some additional funds from the Housing Trust Fund, an additional $650,000, which would be a $1.3 million Housing Trust Fund due to some cost increases due to design and installation of a dry sprinkler system, as well as some other cost and inflationary measures. And that's what we have for Swananoa. I'm happy to answer any questions, and Kirk Booth is here as well tonight.
But when I read it, it also is adding an additional 300 affordable units with this money. No?
No. It's only for-
Yeah, this was 60 units, and then it was 70 units before.
Oh, in the last go-round?
Correct.
Okay. I apologize. Okay. Does the developer want to say anything?
Counsel, good afternoon. I just want to say that the project is doing exactly what we wanted it to do. We have 40 units there. They're all rented to, as Paul said, the tenants that we were aiming to reach, and so I'm very happy where we are. We just need a little bit more help. Happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, have any questions?
I don't have any questions, just a comment. Again, this also came to HCD, and I would also commend, commend you on this and say this is definitely a worthy project in my eyes. Renting at, to households at 60% below the AMI and accepting the Housing Choice vouchers is something very needed in the community right now. There are lots of people who have the Housing Choice vouchers and aren't able to use those around the community right now, and so this is going to definitely free up some families to be able to, to move into affordable, nice space to live in and raise their families. So again, thank you, and I hope you continue the work that you're doing as well.
Yeah, and I will point out to all of the thousands of people watching on the TV and the people here in this room that Kirk, you are a private developer, right? You are not a nonprofit.
That's correct.
That is correct. So, so we have a private, and Kirk has, has developed many projects here in town, and he figures out how to make it work, and we would love to be working with more private developers. So if you are a private housing developer, do not think that you cannot make this work, because you can, because Kirk does, over and over again. Thanks.
So I will open this up to public comment. No? Yep.
Hello, mayor for the night.
Mayor for the night. Wow.
That's what, I was trying to think of before, but anyway, I'm Timothy Sadler still, and I was also wondering about public art with this one, because we got city money in it, and so that, is that like a new development for city? Like, I think we give like 1%- Like, I think we give like 1% for new projects or something for public art. So do we get public art with this one?
So the only, I mean, maybe you guys could see, but my, my understanding is that when the city builds a project, we set aside 1% for public art, but we are not allowed to require anybody else to do that. That would be one of those things from Raleigh that we're not allowed to do.
But even if it's, we're donating money?
I mean, we could make it a condition of this, but I think in the situations of affordable housing, we're actually trying to get affordable housing. So that would be my, that would be my comment on that one.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Any other public comment? With that, I will close the public comment period and take a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Move to approve the request by the Swan Noah Bend LLC to, to borrow an additional $650,000 from the Housing Trust Fund for a total loan amount of 1.3 million due to cost increases for the Simpson Street project.
Second. I have motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Paul, you're batting 750 now. No, 667 now or something.
Okay, so the third and final Housing Trust Fund application tonight is for Amherst Apartments, which is very exciting because this is a tax credit development that was actually awarded within the city limits of Asheville. And also a very exciting story in that there was a 2018 application that was not awarded until somebody else dropped out and then Amherst moved into the 2018 awards, which is very exciting to get an award here in the City of Asheville limits. This will be 70 rental apartments, 14 one-bedrooms, 35 two-bedrooms, and 21 three-bedrooms. I think as most of you know, through either the Affordable Housing Advisor Committee or Housing Community Development, we are updating the bone report. And those reports usually come back with a need for studios, ones and twos. The community often talks to us about the need for the three-bedrooms. So I was very excited to see here with the tax credit development that there's also going to be three-bedroom units here. And again, the theme, these will all be rented to households under 60% of area median income with 18 units set aside for individuals and families under 30% of the area median income. As most of you probably know, tax credit developments can be tricky, especially coming up with the sources to finance this project. And so taking a look here where the city's Housing Trust Fund fit in, along with awards, our funding from North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, the equity and the tax credits, also some home funds from the Asheville Regional Housing Consortium. There was an additional required funds that they were looking for, 1.37 million. And working in partnership with Jim Yemeen and Amherst Apartments, we were able to see where we could fit in to help cover some of that gap to where now, instead of a $600,000 Housing Trust Fund, it is a $1.2 million Housing Trust Fund. And Jim and his group were able to fill that other deficit with some additional fundings through value engineering and also some additional loan funds from CSG. And their cost increases were due to some, that late notification of the award I mentioned, as well as associated inflation with cost. And so that is Amherst. Jim is not here tonight, but we're happy to answer any questions. And if I can, just the best reason to fly back from New York today was to come in for this slide, because this shows where with city's Housing Trust Fund of $3 million for these projects, we're getting 145 new affordable units to individuals and families making under 60% of area median income, tackling the 30% AMI, also our homeless households with a variety of bedroom sizes, and coming in at just under $20,897 per unit. And the community development team is really proud of this because it's working with our mission-driven developers who are really out there doing the hardest work and tackling those individuals and families under 60% of area median income. So great to see Homeward Bound, tax credit development, and local developer, private developer here tonight. So happy to answer any questions back to Amherst, but thank you for that.
Great.
Paul, I don't have any questions specifically about Amherst, but I just want to mention to everyone that what we're seeing at HCD, are projects starting to come back in because of cost overruns. And my guess is that we may see that again. And Paul, if you could just tell everyone here, because again, we've heard it at HCD, when, if all of these projects, you know, everything that we have approved funding for, if that, if they go through, how much, including our $5 million bond money, how much will we have left in the Housing Trust Fund?
I did not anticipate that math question. I didn't anticipate an area median income question. But I think the last time without the $5 million, I think actually with the $5 million and these fundings coming, this funding coming through, I think it might be.
It's right around a million, isn't it?
1.6 comes to mind.
Yeah, 1.0, here's Andrew coming up to get your back.
Enter Mayor.
We have about 3.5 million if you can solve the.
What's, what's your spend?
With this included, I mean, the $600,000, $650,000, and the $530,000, this starts to get, you know, into the, dropping things in bank accounts. But the $5 million set aside in the bond for the Housing Trust Fund, including all of these and Hillier and the previous projects, will leave us about 3.5 million approximately.
3.5, okay. That's a little bit more than, than we.
More than what we expected.
Yeah. So that's good. The, the point I think that, that we've been making at HCD is we, we need more money. I know everybody thinks we approved a $25 million housing bond, and we're great, and we're all set, but, but we're not. And, you know, we're, more projects are coming in, cost overruns are happening. We, we haven't even, we haven't even started to put money toward our city-owned properties yet. And we just, at the finance committee meeting this afternoon, had the first conversation about getting into a new pattern of, of general obligation bonds. And I suggested that we should absolutely look at including affordable housing as a part of that as, as we go on, because we just, $25 million, it sounds big, but it's not going to go very far to, to meet the needs in this community.
And I think that 1.6 I mentioned is the obligations that we know that might be coming in from developers we've been talking to. So that's where that would come from.
Project.
Any questions?
Any other questions?
I don't have a question. I know the developer, the applicant is probably going to come up. But before they do, just want to highlight again what you already mentioned. The project is proposed. It's going to have 14 one-bedrooms, 35 two-bedrooms, 21 three-bedroom apartments, and specifically 18 apartments that are set aside for deeply affordable at 30% AMI. And just kind of to wrap up the previous projects that we approved earlier tonight, this, these are the sorts of projects that I'm wanting to see come through that are deeply affordable, 60% AMI, and the 30% and projects that accept Housing Choice vouchers. So I'm, I'm definitely thrilled with the projects that are coming through tonight and believe that they are all worthy projects. So with that, hopefully we'll hear from the developer, I guess.
I don't think he's here.
He's not here. We've heard from him in HCD now.
So with that, I will open it up for public comment. And I will close public comment. So I would take a motion.
I make a motion to approve the request by Home, Workforce Homestead Incorporated to borrow an additional $600,000 from the Housing Trust Fund for a total loan amount of $1.2 million.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. With that, I am going to ask Councilwoman Haynes to take over the boards and commissions' recommendations.
So boards and commissions would like to recommend for the ABC Board, Robin Cape.
Is that a motion?
Second, if that's a motion.
That's a motion. Okay.
You say that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Second, we have, Jan Davis is currently serving as an interim, but we would like him to be, become board chair. Recommendation.
A motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
All those in favor? Thanks for all of me through it. And as far as Multimodal Transportation Committee, the committee recommended that we postpone until our August meeting.
Which doesn't mean a, thank you. Okay, with that, I will close the formal meeting and open it up for informal discussion and public comment. So I've got some folks who have signed up, but everyone will have a chance to speak. But we'll start with the people who signed up. I'll go over the rules again. You have three minutes. If you want more than that, up to 10 minutes, three people need to cede their time to give public comment. And we talk about anything that has not been discussed on the agenda previously. So the first one I have is Drew Crawford.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Start by asking the three designated people to raise their hand, which are these guys. And then anyone else who is in favor of this conversation about tiny houses, if you would raise your hand for the other folks who come in as well. So thank you for that. Thank you, Ms. Crawford.
So I assume that means you want 10 minutes?
May I have 10 minutes?
Okay.
And I appreciate that. Again, my name is Drew Crawford. And Vice Mayor, I believe you've heard me talk about my indoor job of, I love small businesses and my small business consulting, the HCD. Thank you, guys. You have heard me speak already about my outdoor job, which is creating space for tiny houses and working to really create space for tiny houses. Three things I want to talk to you tonight. Way to use tiny houses on wheels specifically, as a way to address affordable housing in the City of Asheville. I also will need to bring up towards the end the campground zoning and some proposed requests that I have of you. But first, what is a tiny house? We're talking about structures that are under 400 square feet. When we're talking about tiny houses on wheels, we're specifically talking about things that are meant to be towed periodically, eight and a half feet wide, typically 12 to 40 feet long. If you want to translate that into square feet, we're talking plus or minus 200 square feet. And if I sound familiar, it's because you've heard me before also talk about my pigs and the fence when they did a conditional zoning of the hotel property next to me. We're in extreme east Asheville, we're the last real property in the City of Asheville, just for reference in terms of where we are located, on Burleson Road. And to introduce a few of the folks in the picture, in the bottom right-hand corner, we've got folks who are a woodworker, taking over the family business, another person working in the service industry. Another person has worked for the Humane Society. In the back, you can see in the bus in the corner, Eric and Kate and Sunny are in the back. Eric works in environmental restoration, I believe those things are. And Kate works for Park Service. That's me, working on my house. First thing we want to talk about is life safety, building code. There are third-party inspection processes that have been approved as a pathway by the state fire marshal. And these certifications do take different formats, but basically rest assured that if you have a NOAA, National Organization of Alternative Housing, house, it has been certified. And we'll talk about more about the different jurisdictions that are accepting that. The other big issue, other than building, is zoning and property rights. Two big buckets in tiny houses. If it's on wheels, we're really talking about RVs. That's the regulatory structure we're operating in. We'll talk about the 180 rule. If it's permanent on a foundation, we'll talk about HUD manufactured homes, or again, this concept of a code-compliant NOAA house being used as a permanent structure. The question is what happened on that 181st day in terms of the life, safety, and zoning issues between permanent and temporary? But there are ways to talk about those differences. Tiny houses on wheels as compared to traditional RVs, if you will, tin cans versus stick-built homes are energy-efficient, durable, repairable. They create value. You'll hear me talking in just a second about working with incomes between that 60 and 80% range that not only is rent, but we're actually have ownership over the home you're living in. One of the references we are talking about is movable with one hour. And again, what tiny homes are not, they're not tied to a park that can continually increase prices. This is why on wheels is a necessary part of our conversation, because we have large investment funds going in this region, buying up mobile home parks, and they're not really mobile. The prices get raised and the lot rent, the people are stuck there. If you keep it on wheels, we're in much better shape. What do we need to add tiny houses to the affordable housing toolbox? We need to start looking at what zoning is available to tiny houses. We need to expand where they're available, not take it away. Again, the topic we'll come back to. Explore floodplains, village infill, or smaller projects. Alternatives to ADU, we'll talk in a moment about a city that has basically enabled tiny houses to function as ADUs in their city. And we think we can write the guardrails to make tiny houses work for Asheville. Affordability, we'll skip straight to the bottom line. I think of it in terms of how much do I need to make per hour in order to afford one of these, including lot rent? Works out to about $14 in that 60 to 80% range. Half of it goes to lot rent. That's rent that goes away for utilities and everything else. The other half is, think of it as a mortgage on the house that is movable. We can also talk about different places you want to put them. Do you want to put them in campgrounds, like exist in Florida? Or maybe campgrounds that exist in Hendersonville? There are properties in Hendersonville, Simple Life, Akinny Bell, that have already solved this problem, that are really designed as communities around these ideas. Portland, they're the namesake. But the City of Durham has been able to take the NOAA certification, attach it to a foundation, and clear it through the State of North Carolina as a dwelling unit. Henderson County, again, we've already talked about the two major projects that are there. Lake Dallas, Texas, used a planning urban development, a PUD, I believe they call that. St. Louis, Abysbo, they're the ones who wrote an entire policy so that they can accept them as ADUs, including annual inspections. So here's what I have recognized as the roadblock. The main folks that have got to talk to each other, zoning, building code, affordable housing, staff. It's really hard to have a conversation with just one person at a time, because you've heard of not in my backyard, not in my bucket. It's everyone saying it's the other person's job to get this process started. So my ask of you as a council is, as you began, and now I believe September, talking about affordable housing, recognize that this cross-disciplinary subject requires, well, a multifunctional team to sit down in one place at one time to really make this happen. And I believe it can happen quickly with this basis. I will be sending to each of you a link to the documents and other things that I've cited this evening following. Never make a presentation without quoting yourself. Building a tiny house is hard. Finding a place to put it is harder. And more recently, putting the mobile back in mobile homes, really making them as value-creation prospects for folks. And again, this emphasis that these are families who are living in these areas. May I have a time check, by the way? Thank you. These really are families. Sunny in the back is no longer the youngest occupant of our community. And our, a community at the moment is one house with three bedrooms, two of which are used as a homestay, six parking spots, one of which is on Airbnb as a short-term rental, so people can actually visit and experience what it's like to live in a tiny house. The other five are what I describe as owner-occupied, another, the person who built it lives in it. And that is really what I want to help you, the city, with, is I want to help move this project forward as best I can. But I need to ask for your help. I believe you will recognize this as the change-of-use table from the January 9th, 2018 meeting. I'll say that I had a small part in it. If you look under homestay and highway business, HB, near the middle, it is a P use that got changed to an S. In 2017, I got a notice of violation that I didn't have a homestay permit. And I said, but it's a permitted use. And they basically said, yes, but we want you to pull a permit. We want to treat it as if it was already an S, because we need to document this and understand what's going on. So I filled out the permit. At that time, I asked, hey, I also have this campground with the one that's on wheels. Do we, we need to talk about that? And the answer was, was that's a campground, that's something else. We don't want to talk about that. We want to focus on the main structure, the house. And I'm like, great. But as things happen, our house was on fire. We had to move quickly. The city had to move quickly to deal with houses becoming rentals. So now if you look under campground, under HB, you'll notice that that far-left P is crossed out. So at the same time, without it being mentioned either to planning and zoning or here to council, campground was removed from use in the Highway Business District. And that was not discovered until very recently. And to quote from the documents provided during that 2018 meeting, "The updates to the form code tables were only to align them with new definitions and did not impose any new restrictions." And I have to ask that this be recognized as a new. And I have to ask that this be recognized as a new restriction that was occurred at the time. We're going to call it the water damage from trying to put out the house fire. And there are some other inconsistencies, it's the only time that Ps weren't replaces with Ss. You'll also notice that while lodging expansion was added to campgrounds permitted, residential expansion wasn't, which might be a more appropriate expansion uses for campground, because we really want to talk about these as residences. So, here's the ask of council. I'm asking that if zoning use changed, I want it to be talked about. That's all I'm asking for. Please ask that Planning and Zoning have a conversation about this change of use for campground in the Highway Business. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next person I have is Stephen Foster, I believe.
For those who are over 40. Vice Mayor, I'm requesting 10 minutes to address council. I have three people with me to cede their time.
Okay.
Thank you for allowing Council of Independent Business Owners to make public comment regarding City of Asheville's annual budgeting process for upcoming and subsequent years. I am representing the Council of Independent Business Owners Budget Committee professionally. I've been a CPA here in Asheville for more than 30 years. We understand that you have completed the budget process for 2019 and 2020. Certainly, you are happy that the process is over, and you can now get on to other business. Last year, we presented findings regarding the budget and made some recommendations for dealing with the rehabilitation of the city's infrastructure. We are back again this year addressing many of the same issues. We are still concerned with the city's handling of the core infrastructure components. Transit, this is the word that we are hearing in almost every city council meeting. Additionally, we are reminded over and over again about the need for more funding and the possibility of more tax dollars being raised upon this activity. We do not dispute the need for a transit system. Asheville needs one. The problem here, though, is the request to grow the system when the system is deficient in efficiency at the current level of service. The most recent reports show the system overall efficiency for being on time 60%, and that the system is plagued with breakdowns in the new technology-type buses that you may not have expertise to fix in a timely manner. Well, let's look at this. If the average bus route is on time 60% of the time, how can the public depend on it? What that means is that a person who needs to get to work, or to a medical appointment, or whatever, will only arrive at the necessary time 60% of the time. So, 40% of the time, it's a failure. For example, a person who has five-days-a-week job and rides the bus three days a week, they make the job on time, two days a week, they arrive late. To put it more close to home, what is one of your, what if one of your staff members sitting in this room right now arrived on time at work, only 60% of the time? You would not accept that at all. You would probably talk to them at first, then write them up one or two times, and then eventually you would let them go, no longer an employee of the city of Asheville. Unfortunately, we just looked at employees going to work. The sad part here is that citizens who ride the bus go to medical appointments, take their kids places, and so on. City Council, you are the transit authority. You are in control. The seven of you need to pick routes to ride for a week, no exceptions. You go to work and do your activities by bus, including your families. By doing this, you will gain an understanding of the problems in your system. If you have to replace people, or if you need to replace the transit providers, or if you need to go to older, more reliable buses to do so that don't break down, do it. Let's get this straightened out. Water, it's our opinion that water line infrastructure is another critical item and deserves your immediate attention. Just this year, several large water line breaks have inconvenienced and jeopardized many Asheville business owners and homeowners. For instance, in February and March, there was a large water break on Merriman Avenue that crews worked on for over a week due to the age of the transmission lines. Word was that due to the age of the line, replacement parts were hard to come by. Then, as part of the line was repaired and put back online, another break would occur nearby. There was also a large break on the main transmission lines coming out of the treatment plant, causing dirty water throughout the system, which was especially harmful to the tourist-based industries such as restaurants, breweries, and lodging. Furthermore, over Father's Day weekend, there was a large break in South Asheville. It's an ongoing theme with the water system, break, repair, break, repair. The main transmission lines are a ticking time bomb, and ignoring the need to replace many of them is no longer an option. The time is over for the out-of-sight, out-of-mind mentality. As a city, we fought diligently, you fought diligently, to keep ownership of the water system, spending millions in legal fees. It's past time to put a singular diligent focus on the system. Roomers are bound about water lines that are over 100 years old, with even wooden lines in some areas and places where we don't even know where the lines are located. All of these issues plague the system. Asheville has a plentiful and pristine water source, but the transmission of the water to your citizens is woefully lacking. It's time for you to focus on the maintenance of this important infrastructure. You fought hard to keep it, so why not fight just as hard to rehabilitate it? Refocus a significant part of your capital budget to fix it. Your staff is knowledgeable, willing, and up to the task, if you only give them resources to do it. Streets, last year, we presented statistics from your own street study, which laid out the dire condition of city streets. As far as your citizens can tell, nothing has changed. Statistics point to the fact that the asphalt on the average city street has far outlived its life expectancy. But if you travel city streets, you don't need a consultant's report to tell you that. The pavement on city streets is riddled with potholes and broken areas. But rather than spend additional needed resources on repaving and repairing existing streets, you're choosing to spend a large sum of city resources, $1.25 million, to put your citizens on a road diet, whatever that means. Whether you like it or not, your citizens and visitors need a viable road system. Your transit system needs one, too. You have bond money, investment, but unfortunately, that's not enough. Additional city resources must be found to address this important piece of city infrastructure. Safety, did you know the National Crime Reporting Database, areavibes.com, reports that based on available crime statistics, your chance of being a victim of violent crime in Asheville is 1 in 164? Your chance of being a victim of property crime in Asheville is 1 in 22? And your chance of being a victim of any crime in Asheville is 1 in 19? These statistics are probably not much different from any other large city, but should be a wake-up call. Asheville needs to be tough on crime. Property owners in Asheville pay their taxes, deserve, and expect to be safe. By the way, congratulations on hiring Chris Bailey as your new police chief. Not on duty yet, I don't think. Now, give him your support and the resources to address the issues that cause our citizens to feel safe, that feel, that cause our citizens to feel unsafe. Council's job one is the ability to get emergency services to citizens. It is of utmost importance. In conclusion, the city has a very competent and astute city manager in Deborah Campbell, with the skills to manage this growing city. As the managing board of the city's $190 million budget, give her the tools to set the city on a path of restoration and repair. We urge council to take advantage of the unprecedented growth in the city of Asheville and focus resources on core infrastructure needs. Your citizens expect and deserve no less. In closing, the professional members of the Council of Independent Business Owners stand ready to meet, assist, and aid the city in its efforts to address these important infrastructure needs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have Kristoff Morgath, but did you already yield your time for? Did you already yield your time? Okay.
Good evening, council members. I'm really here just to ask two questions of you all. And the first is, we had a nonofficial council meeting on the subject of districting, and I'm just curious where you all are in addressing the issues that were brought forth at that meeting. The clock is ticking. We are going to be entering primary season in about six months. There are potential candidates who have a strong interest in knowing what and how the city's elections are going to be run. For those of us who are concerned that perhaps the city council will not take action in a timely fashion, there may be citizens who would like to get together or petition action. So, we would all be quite grateful for some indication from you, whether or not you plan to take the option of revisiting the city charter, to reinstate the citywide elections, or whether that's something that you're not planning to do, so that the rest of us can figure out how we want to move forward. I hope that you will soon provide some guidance about this, because it's a matter that directly affects the entire voting population, the people who elected you, and the people whom I choose whether or not to reelect you. Second question, revisits the discussion that we had around the Flatiron Hotel, and the question there had to do with how many hotel rooms are enough or too many for Asheville? And that question is really a pointer towards the larger issue of addressing how tourism affects the Asheville economy, what we see as the future of tourism, the funds that are derived from it that may or may not support city government, and how it fits into the mix of a healthy economy for Asheville. I seem to recall at some point there was a discussion about creating a subcommittee or something like that in order to come up with some kind of comprehensive plan around tourism. I think it would be very helpful for the community at large and for people doing business in Asheville and working in Asheville to have a sense for what city council and city government sees as the future of tourism. It's a big question, it's a complicated question, but it's an essential question. And without a clear path forward on that, I think it's going to be very difficult for people who may want to be in business or live here to go forward. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Gabby Romero, and I'm an intern with the Western Region of Democracy, North Carolina. We are a nonpartisan, nonprofit voting rights organization, and as an organization, we echo the concern of the, another citizen on wanting an update on the potential districting of Asheville, specifically on whether or not there will be, you will be pursuing the, amending the charter, or if you will be going with a lawsuit. And if you're going with a lawsuit, what type of lawsuit will you be pursuing? In addition to that, we are also looking for any specific timeline for this process. We were told at the last meeting that it would take three council meetings to amend the charter, and seeing that it is already the end of July, we find that extremely concerning, that we have not heard any specific timeline yet. In addition, we are also wondering if anyone's stances have solidified or changed since the last meeting, especially given the significant support that the people of Asheville have given against districts and the districting of Asheville. As a whole, we support action on fighting against trying to district Asheville. However, we would prefer legal action, given the implications of this case regionally, if you do try to pursue amending the charter, as, and also the uncertainty about the effectiveness of amending the charter alone. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ray Spels?
Thank you.
Probably going to use overhead. Good evening. Kind of last minute, got in here a little late, I apologize. I don't know if the entire city council is aware of what's been going on at Whole Foods in the last couple weeks. I know I sent it to, I know Julie, I sent you copies, I think I sent it to most of the city council, but right before, I think it was a couple days before, it was July 1st, actually, I think, and I went outside on my porch, and there were, it was a river of rotted milk and bits of food, rotted food, running all the way down the street. I posted something, I mean, I went to the store first, and I told them about it, and their way to deal with it, which was completely astounding to me, was to bring a hose through the fence and wash it down the street. And before the employees started doing that, I walked across the street, and I said, "Is this the way you're supposed to handle this?" And he said, "Do you have a better idea?" And I said, "Well, working for a corporation the size of Whole Foods, you should have some kind of policy procedure, health and safety, OSHA procedures for dealing with this." Here's the sad part. So, I finally got ahold of a couple of people in the stormwater quality department, Keisha Lipe and Lee Morrison, and they were, they're still keeping me up to date to some degree on what's going on, but here's my dilemma. I don't have a lot of faith in what's going to happen with this store, because I've owned the house for nine years. I've seen emails from 2013 dealing with this drain. I communicated with Julie, and so did one of my neighbors, who's an attorney, who I have emails where we communicated about this in 2018. Let me see if I can kind of highlight this here. So, you'll see June 1, 2018, I checked on the grease after returning to Asheville, did not see any signs of the same last week. However, today, my neighbor alerted me to grease running out of the sidewalk. I went over there to continue on, he quotes some other prohibitions for nuisance and other items. There's multiple emails. I think Julie, you got ahold of someone, because then someone named Ben Woody was involved, Director of Developmental Services, they had Keisha involved back then. And here's the funny part about this, is they said that there were violations, there were violations, right? But nothing was ever done about it, nothing, zero zilch, nothing. So, this time, I called the sewer department, I called the health department, I called the environmental EPA, I called everybody. Finally, I find out yesterday that they just got a 30-day notice to comply, and they have 30 days not to fix it, they have 30 days to come up with a plan. Then I asked Keisha, and I know this isn't her job function, is to decide whether whatever they're going to do to fix this is going to be a permanent fix, but my problem, sorry about that, but my problem is I just don't have a lot of faith that this is going to be dealt with. So, I just want to know who makes the final decision that this engineering plan is going to be done, and when it's going to be done?
Thank you.
Because it's been years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matilda, my message for our more progressive members, keep up. It's not the time to not be courageous. So many of us have to be courageous. We have to work hard, we have to make motions in our lives to get things done, and we often have to rely on seconds. So, we're looking for people to be aggressive, to fight for answers to these, this gerrymandering, this, these primaries that have been put out and these imposed even your elections. We're looking for folks to fight, and not just on that, we're looking for folks to fight to change city policy around approval of hotels and luxury developments. So, and not just that either, we need, we need inclusionary zoning, we need anti-discrimination ordinances, we need a whole list, we need transit, we need money for transit, we need to extend those services. need transit, we need money for transit, we need to extend those service hours within this fiscal year. And we're organizing, we're getting ready, we're finding folks that not just have good ideas but are willing to fight and stand up for those ideas. And if you want a chance at it, go for it.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I've gotten through the people who've signed up. So Timothy?
Hey, guys, I'm Timothy Stabler, and just wanted to echo a couple of comments. First of all, with the affordable housing guy back here, I mean, we need to do whatever we possibly can because of the epidemic. You know, I'm a solution-type kind of person. I don't look to fight, you know, I like to find like middle grounds, and obviously, he's on something, so like forty hours of staff is a duh. And, you know, definitely, I hope that the Planning and Zoning People Commission can make the space, the time, to have a special meeting on the topic. I personally would like to help in any way because housing is such an epidemic in our community. Thank you, guys, for your leadership, Keith, Chanika, and Julie, are you on the committee, too?
Yes.
Or is it one? Yeah. Oh, yeah, and Julie. And then also with transit, I mean, I do tend to agree with some of the comments that the business people have to say because it's really inefficient, I think, but it's just kind of the nature of the public transit these days. So there's this great Netflix documentary, it's called Liquid Swords by one RZA from Wu-Tang Clan. And he's got a great solution for having, you know, kind of like a ski lift type of thing, it can be public or private, like you can own a cab or the city can invest in them, and it's the return on investment is incredible, and it would be a big attraction for like the, build more, people could, you know, help fund it, the TDA and stuff like that. It would be next level. I mean, no pun intended, but. And then also, just wanted to advocate for more public art. I mean, I think you guys are. And I think that's pretty much all that I was thinking about, but, yeah, whatever we can do to get more housing and healthy housing, not, you know, I really don't like fiberglass, I can't believe we call it green building in this community. It's kind of, I don't know, a pet peeve of mine, but anyway, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Wayne Scott. I want to thank you, guys, for having the work session and suspending the rules to allow for public comment the other night. It was really great. And Mr. Branham, is that right?
That's right.
Did a fantastic job breaking down the situation for us. It is a very complicated situation, but I think some of the points were very elementary. Did a great job explaining how the Wake and Greensboro case is really not at all like the Asheville case whatsoever. I think you mentioned how much power the state has, that we are a mother, may I state, Dillon's rule. I think you even mentioned that, you know, the state has the capacity to eliminate cities, and I think that should be understood that that's in the cards. I mean, I think that everybody's concerned with what Asheville is going to do next should also understand what the North Carolina Legislature, who doesn't like Asheville, will take in response to us. I don't think that they're going to find it to be clever that we've changed our charter back to an at-large system. I don't think that they're going to respond with, "Nice job, you win." I think that, you know, they may want to make sure that this doesn't happen with other municipalities just circumventing the law, make an example out of Asheville, the way, you know, we don't want Reed Thompson's Airbnb to set an example for how other people can scoff law. We're pretty tough on him about things. The law is the law. You know, the North Carolina Legislature could send a message to the rest of municipalities by suspending their ability to have a referendum. We could be the most hated city in the whole state. We could wreck it for a lot of municipalities. We could cease to exist. There may not be a chain reaction, as Mr. Branham said after this, because I think that maybe the North Carolina Legislature will have had enough of this nonsense and end the charter. I mean, they could, they could remove you from office, put in an interim council, and since they don't like you very much, maybe they'll appoint somebody who's just, you know, a thorn in your side. Could you imagine such a thing? So again, I think that the most prudent thing to do is to amend the charter to get a primary. I think that's a completely reasonable ask. Districts are here to stay, there is no lawsuit, there's nothing that we can really do, and cooler heads need to prevail. And, you know, I know that it's not a popular position, but the will of the people have been wrong many times in history. Jim Crow laws carried the day by majority votes. Plenty of systems that have been in place have been done so by the majority. The majority has been used to suppress minority power, and that's exactly what at-large systems do, and that's why they've been eliminated, by and large, by the efforts of the civil rights movements. You know, the NAACP could have petitioned the NAACP Legal Defense Fund to come to our aid. So anyway, thanks again for everything.
Thank you. Public, you've already, sorry. One shot at public comment. Any, anyone else who wants to give a public comment?
I've got just a couple of things before we go to a closed session.
Okay, informal.
Yeah. So I just want to, to some degree, respond to a couple of things that people have said tonight around a couple of issues, things that are coming up. So on the tiny home issue, and Drew alluded to this in his comments, council is having a work session on affordable housing on September sixth. And we at HCD have asked the staff to specifically help us understand the current regulatory framework around tiny houses so that we can figure out, frankly, what we need to do to, in my mind, help make them legal. Because, just total transparency on where I am on that, we, you know, as we alluded to earlier, housing is very, very expensive here, and what we have to do is start bringing down the cost of the construction. And tiny homes are a great way to do that, there are other ways to do that, but, so we're going to be having that conversation at that work session on September sixth. Also, at our last HCD meeting, we asked the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, or we tasked them with starting to look at additional incentives for homeowners around building ADUs and using long-term rentals for folks with housing vouchers. So again, we're just trying to expand the pie of homes that can be used for, can and should be used for affordable housing. So we're continuing to try to address this problem in new and creative ways. The second thing I want to address is the issue of hotels. So in the wake of the Flatiron vote, you know, I think several people up here said, "Again, we need to have a conversation around hotels." And shortly after that, I proposed to Esther that we just put a hotel moratorium in place or we explore that so that we can have this conversation. And so at our August 29 PED meeting, we will be getting our initial briefing on a hotel moratorium, what that process will be, but suffice it to say, we could have a moratorium in place, I think, well before the end of the year in order to give us the breathing room that we need to have the conversation around guardrails around hotel construction in the city that we have been talking about for several months and not yet done anything about. So some people will love that, some people will hate that, but that's where we're headed. Just wanted to say that.
Anything else? So I believe we have a closed session.
I move that Asheville City Council go into closed session for the following reasons: to prevent disclosure of information that is privileged and confidential pursuant to the laws of North Carolina or not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statutes. The law that makes information privileged and confidential is North Carolina General Statute 143 through 31810E. To consult with an attorney employed by the city about matters with respect to which the attorney-client privilege between the city and its attorney must be preserved, including but not limited to the administrative procedure and the potential lawsuit regarding city council election districts. The statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143 through 31811A3, as well as a potential lawsuit involving other parties.
May I have a second? Councilman Haynes seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We will adjourn out of the closed session.